Good evening and welcome to the July 12th Tukahoe Board of Trustees Meeting. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Trustee Howell.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Trustee Cronin.
Present.
Mayor Andino.
Present, and this today we have no appointments, so we'll move on to presentations by Girl Scout Troop 2642 regarding their Hometown Heroes banner program. So will the representative for the Girl Scouts please come forward? Please state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Mackenzie Bernard. I'm nine years old and I'm from the Troop 2642. A special hello to Mayor Andino, Mr. Pinto, Board, our village, and our Girl Scout Troop 2642. Today I am here to talk about the Hometown Heroes Program, to honor the past veterans and the present veterans, and also the past and present essential workers. When I hear the word hero, I think of Miss Elaine from the library. She's an amazing person and she helped me get books throughout COVID. Now I'll pass the microphone to Sammy.
Hi, I'm Samantha. Hi, I'm Samantha Anderson. I'm 10 years old and I'm from Troop 2642. I think Hometown Heroes spotlights all the veterans that have served. For example, my great-grandpa Ernest Grant, who was part of the Eastchester and Tukahoe community, and he was also a veteran. Our troop thinks this is important because we would like to show community members, past and present, the honor they deserve.
To wrap this all up, I would like the Board for the support for having the DPW put up the banners throughout the village. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Nicely done. And if you just hang out for a little while, you'll hear the Board vote on authorizing your request. The next we will have, we have no public hearings today. May I have a motion to adopt the minutes for approval of the minutes of June 7, 2021?
So moved. Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
Mayor Andino.
In favor. And this is the first opportunity for any members of the public to address the Board on any agenda items. If there's anyone who would like to address the Board on any agenda items, please do so now. Hi, Jeff.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for having me. Jeff Suckerman, I live on Bronx Street, right here in Tukahoe. I rise in support of Agenda Item Number Six on the, that you're going to set a hearing agenda for public preservation law? Okay. I couldn't be any more in support of anything than I am. But before I get all riled up, let me just say I'm wearing a classic vintage shirt for the Tukahoe Road Race, the 26th Annual, and this year, what annual is it? Forty-fifth, so didn't have to be a math teacher like me to know that that was 19 years ago that I ran in this. Thank you very much. Anyway, so we're having it on July, on September 12th this year. Little plug for that. There are posters up all around the village. Let me just say this. I live in a neighborhood called Lakeview over near the Parkway Oval, and we had a smokestack there that was there for 140 years, 150 years. There was absolutely nothing wrong with this smokestack. It was straight as an arrow. It was strong. There's a place that moved in here called Riverview 20 years ago, 15 to 20 years ago. It was part of their site plan that they had to maintain it. The building department wrote them letters supposedly. Nobody, there's no follow-up. There is no enforcement on-site plan. So therefore, 20 years later, they said, oh, boy, this is in bad shape. And they wanted five parking spaces right where it was. And now there are five parking spaces there. Joanie Mitchell used to sing "Take Paradise and Put Up a Parking Lot." Well, that's what we did. We took paradise, we put up a parking lot. Now, the people in Riverview didn't really enjoy opening their windows in the morning and seeing the smokestack because they had absolutely no sense of history here. But for those people, like my wife's family, who lived here in that same house that we're in since 1916, and the smokestack was there and it's still there, and there was nothing wrong with it. The planning board, it was a travesty what they did. I've told all of them individually, I will tell them again, it was just a travesty. And we went to meetings, there was a, there was an early-on work session, and there was a engineer there for the people in Riverview, and I point-blank said to them, just tell me the truth, man. Is this thing going to fall down? They said, oh, no, Jeff, this is not going to fall down. It's nothing like that. Just needs to be taken care of. Well, that ended up not being the engineer that ended up in the final analysis, because in the final analysis, they found an engineer who said, oh, this is dangerous, this is dangerous. But nobody knows what the danger was. It wasn't going to fall down. So it needed to be maintained for the 20 years that we didn't make them maintain it. So if good law can be put in place to say, well, we can enforce the site plan approval, something. Now, I brought a, it took them a couple of days to take it down. I brought one of the blocks that made up the entire structure, okay? And the planning board led us to believe that, oh, man, these things are, they're loose. They're loose, the bricks are loose, okay? We thought, everybody in town thought that meant that the bricks were just like little bricks on the outside. These are six inches wide, so anything that was like, could have been a little loose, would have had to come out six full inches before it fell, and nobody walking around that entire smokestack ever saw one out, even one inch. But somebody felt one, oh, it's a little loose. So a little cement would have kept these in for another 150 years. This was a shame. It's a shameful thing we did. We have so few things that represent older Tukahoe, and newer Tukahoe people don't really care. And that's what happened. We can make any story up we want, we can listen to any nonsense that was told, but that's exactly what happened. They got five parking spaces and took down one of the only things that anybody could walk around Tukahoe. Oh, man, oh, that was Hodgman Rubber Company. They made, they made raincoats during World War I, and then US Vitamin was there, Revlon was there, and they used that smokestack. And now it's gone. And it was not at all, there was no reason in the world to take it down. We needed to enforce the site plan, we needed to make them do a little maintenance every year, and then whatever. Anyway, that's my story. I support you 1,000% in doing what you're going to do on September 13th, and I hope you get great approval for it, because we need it. I mean, how many things can you even name, like the smokestack? You probably can't name any. You got the warehouse, you got some things. But a monument like that, that people could see from all over the village, it's gone. And there's nothing else in the whole village that people can see from all over the village and say, oh, man, that's old Tukahoe. Let's go find out about that. Thank you. Sorry to be so brusque.
Thank you, Jeff. Your point is well-taken, except for one point. That new Tukahoe residents don't care as much as old Tukahoe residents, because it's this Board that is comprised of some new members, including myself in the village, do care enough that we form the task force to help protect our historic sites.
Well, bless you. A little late, but let's go forward and save anything else we can, Omaira. Thank you so much.
That's what we're trying to do.
I thank you all, really. That's such a great step in the right direction.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else like to address the Board on any agenda items? Okay, having said that, then we will move on to resolutions. We have a few today. So the first one is in response to the request from Troop 2642. May I have a motion authorizing the use of village polls by Troops 2642 for Hometown Hero banners?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
Mayor Andino.
Wholeheartedly in favor. Congratulations, ladies. Thank you for your presentation. Second resolution is authorizing a consolidated funding application for a Smart Growth Comprehensive Planning Grant in the amount of $100,000, and this is a grant that we will be applying for to help support our master plan updating. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
Mayor Andino.
In favor. Resolution Number Three, authorizing the use of Main Street Park to have a tennis court, a tennis clinic for the Ecap Tennis Camp on Wednesdays, July 7, 28, August 4, and 11, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
Mayor Andino.
In favor. And Resolution Number Four, some of you may be aware that the Andrus Childhood Center has closed, so we are asking to authorize transfer of the lease between the village from Andrus to the new Cornerstone Children's Center. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
Mayor Andino.
In favor. And we are looking to set some public hearings for September when we return. The first one being a public hearing for, to consider a proposed local law amending the village zoning code to prohibit stadium and sports lights on September 13th. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
In favor, and for those of you who are interested here, we have drafted a proposed law for this resolution. The second resolution is setting a public hearing on September 13 to consider establishing a model landmark preservation local law, which Jeff just referred to. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
In favor. And I'd like to ask for a motion setting a public hearing on September 13 to consider a proposed local law opting out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries and/or onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the village of Tukahoe, just to give a little bit of an update and help me out here, David. So the cannabis laws are two-part, they're twofold. One deals with consumption, which the village does not vote on. That's a law that's been passed. What we are voting on and possibly opting out of is retail sale of cannabis in the village. There are some pros and cons. One of the benefits would be that we would receive a 3% revenue if we were to have a dispensary or if we passed a law to allow the dispensary. In Tukahoe, what are some other things, David? I'm drawing a blank.
There's also consumption.
Well, we get the whole 3% unless the town opts in, right?
County gets a cut too, don't they?
It's 4%, and the county gets the 1%.
We get 3%.
Local municipality would get 3, as the town opted out already. If the village did not opt out and one did come here, we would get the entire 3%.
Right. It's also important to note that you can opt out now and opt in later, but you can't do the opposite. You can't opt in, right, and then opt out. Right? Yes, I did reread that today to confirm. So those are some things for us to consider. So may I have, unless there's anything else on the Board, from the Board, any other input?
I just wanted to make it clear that there'll be onsite cannabis consumption as well, as well as, you know, the sale of it. So just, people need to be aware of that as well.
Right, there could be either places, either type of place. Right.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
So moved.
For a local law opting out.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
Mayor Andino.
In favor. Resolution Number Eight authorizes me to execute an IMA with the Town of Eastchester, the Village of Bronxville, and the Tukahoe and Eastchester School Districts for street resurfacing. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
Mayor Andino.
In favor. Resolution Number Nine authorizes the mayor to execute an IMA with Westchester County Department of Correction for a prisoner transportation agreement. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
In favor. And Resolution Number Ten, authorizing a tax settlement with One Elm Street Associates for assessment years 2018 to 2021 for address One Elm Street in the amount of $72,897.55. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
Mayor Andino.
In favor, and we have to pay the bills, so I'm asking for a motion authorizing approval of vouchers in the amount of $909,053.43.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Taylor.
In favor.
Trustee Cronin.
In favor.
Mayor Andino.
In favor. And we'll move to departmental reports. Do we have anyone from DPW here? No report. Libraries, Swarishan?
Director of Library. Yes, good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity. I just want to say, first of all, that Tukahoe Library received the grant in the amount of $20,250 from the Community Fund of Bronxville.
Sorry, Swarish, can you just repeat that?
Yes, I just want to, Tukahoe Library received the grant in the amount of $20,250 from the Community Fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tukahoe, and we want to thank you for their generous support to the library. Every year we get some money from them, and because of this Community Fund, we are able to offer all these wonderful programs for adults, teens, and children. And I will give you a little glimpse what's coming up. So our summer reading program started, so we have different, the theme was Tales and Tales for the children's, and we had a wonderful event for the beginning for the children. We had the Bubble Bus. And the upcoming events are Virtual Writing Camp, which is every Wednesday, July 14 and 21st. We already did seven at 4:00 p.m. for grade 3rd to 5th, and for other grades, 6th to 8th, it's going to be 5 to 6. And final finale will be, we will have Ice Cream Social, we will, kids will meet outside with the author, and she will sign the books. Then we have Kids Concert, Robert the Guitar Guy, July 22 at 11:30, and this is going to be on Zoom. And we have every week art classes by Mike Teeter on Tuesday at 4:30 p.m. And we have Storytime in the park, and we also have other craft activities, and also cooking programs for children. And we have other activities for teens. Today we did the crafts, kids make their own necklaces. It was outside, it was wonderful, and they all were very happy. We had, I think, 16, 17 teens who came for the program. And for teens, we also have online babysitting workshop, which is going to be on August 4th and 5th, and from 10:00 to 11:30. And after the students who attend the program, they will get the certificate. And we have manga art classes for teens, which is going to be on July 15 and August 12. And the final finale will be on August 9 at 4:30, and they will discuss their favorite books over smores at the outdoor teen reading program. And for children's and teen, and we have for adults, the adult themes we pick a little different, we have paths full to the reading around the globe. So what this involves, we encourage people to read the books from different continents. So each time you read a book from each continent, so you get a raffle ticket, we encourage them to read the books from different continent, but they can participate and they can read whatever they like. And for the Indian, we, sorry, for the adults, we have the next program is Indian cuisine, and which I am going to do the cooking program on Monday, August 2 at 6:30 p.m. And Mayor Omaira Andino is going to do it for us, for Puerto Rican cooking, which is going to be on Wednesday, August 18 at 6:30 p.m. Thank you so much, Omaira, for doing this for us. And we have Tukahoe History Before and After with Nick Zanzano on Wednesday, August 11 at 6:30 p.m. Also, we have Summer Book Club on July 26, and we are reading before the coffee gets cold. And the books, copy of the books are available at the library. And our summer reading finale is going to be on August 23 at 6:30 p.m., where we have Book Bingo and Raffle and other games. So we encourage all of you, please visit our website and join our program. It's a lot of fun, and if you know somebody, please let them know. Thank you.
Thank you, Swarish. Is there anything that we can do to eliminate that sound? I didn't hear that before. Gary? Okay, I think it's gone. No, no, no questions. We're just trying to figure out sound here. All right, thank you, Swarish. Gary, do you have anything? Oh, Gary and Camille, nothing? David?
Just a couple of things real quick. On an administrative note, Summer Hour started last week, so village offices do close at 1 o'clock on Fridays. Just want to make everyone aware of that. We're continuing to get a lot more information in regards to the American Rescue Plan funding that's coming in. The village of Tukahoe amount is a little less than anticipated. Eastchester and Bronxville's amounts were less as well, because I contacted them. No, no understanding of why it was, it was a little bit less, but I think it's, you know, around $20,000, so it's for this fiscal year, so it's nothing, you know, too major to worry about. We're still looking into, there's a lot more restrictions placed on the funding than originally thought, so we're still kind of going through that to ensure that, you know, how we do spend is, is in line with, with the regulations. And just on a, you know, a positive note, by the time the next Board meeting, the village is planning a significant amount of road resurfacing, and I know a lot of people do want to hear that, because a lot of the roads are getting very bad. We're getting a lot of complaints in regards to things like Marble Dale and stuff like that. So that is on a road repaving list, as well as a good portion of Yonkers Avenue, Columbus Avenue, and some other side streets as well. So by the next time this, this meeting, hopefully by the end of August, very early September, that will be completed.
Thank you, David. Some, I wouldn't call it necessarily miscellaneous business, but some other business. We will have Tukahoe Field Day and Picnic, which we'll probably hear from one of the trustees a little more information, on July 17, from noon to 6:00 at the Immaculate Conception Church. We also had already, and you'll hear from Trustee Cronin, Movie in the Park last Friday, and we'll also have it again on July 23 at 8:30 p.m. Or sundown at, it's not going to be at Parkway Oval, it's going to be at the Main Street Park. And the movie will be Coco, so bring your kids out, and the big kids, the adult kids come out too. I'm sure that Deputy Mayor will talk to you a little about 45, the 45th Annual Tukahoe Challenge on September 12 at 9:00 a.m. Our next village Board meeting will be on September 13, so we will not have a meeting in August, so make note. And we will also have Tukahoe Cares Day, which Trustee Cronin will talk a little more about also on September 25, to continue in our cleanup and our love for the village. And so we'll move on to Board of Trustees reports, and we'll start with Trustee Lang.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I want to say what a wonderful send-off it was for Alice last week. It was super hot, that's for sure, but a boatload of people showed up, and it was just wonderful. So Alice, we wish you all the best of luck, and, you know, in Michigan, with your daughters. And also, thanks to all responsible for the monument. The monument was beautiful, and it'll just be a constant reminder of all of the good work that Phil did for our village beautification. So I spoke with Susan Shimao, she's currently on vacation. She asked me if I would just hold off until next month, and she would fill us in on everything that they just recently did, things that, projects that are going on, and what their plans are for 2021. So I'll be, I'll let you guys know when I get that information. I want to thank the Tukahoe Police Department for hosting Cone with a Cop. My sons love that event, thank you very much, they also thank you. But more so, what I wanted to mention was, so I was on my way to Lake Isle a couple of weeks ago, and, and coming through Crestwood, I couldn't help but to notice three officers, and it seemed like they were having an issue with a gentleman, and, you know, he was back and forth along the sidewalk, and the officers were, you know, trying to, it appeared to be, I don't know for a fact, but it appeared to be a mental health call. And I just want to congratulate Officers Santiago, McCann, and Coghlan, because it could have went terribly wrong. The officer showed an incredible amount of respect, restraint. There was a time where the gentleman attempted to go up the stairs to the platform of the train, and Officer Santiago quickly, you know, led him in another direction. I sat there and I watched the entire thing unfold, and, and I tell you, I was just so proud of these officers and our department, and they were able to, you know, get the gentleman down with, with no incident whatsoever. So congratulations, Chief, and TPD and those officers I had just mentioned. Nice job, thank you very much. Okay, lastly, the reminder for Tukahoe Field Day. John Galoos has been hard at work, so there's going to be a lot of good food, music, games. I'm hoping for good weather, and I think, you know, it's going to be great. After all of this time, you know, indoors, it's going to be nice to see everybody out, so if everybody can come out, that'd be wonderful. And I guess that's all I have. Mayor, thank you very much.
I hope they have cornhole, I learned how to play that, and I'm pretty good, so.
I'm good.
Trustee, Deputy Mayor Howell.
Thank you. I agree, we've been having some wonderful events in the village, and it's great to see ones that continue, like Cone with a Cop, and new ones like the Movie Night, so it's a great effort on everybody's part. For the zoning board, the meeting will be July 14 at 7:30, and that will be preceded by the working meeting at 6:30. There is really nothing that I haven't reported on that's on the agenda. For planning board, there's only one, you know, minor thing on there, a new dance studio at 125 Marble Dale is being considered. The meeting's July 20 at 7:30. The working meeting was already held on July 6, and that is, was covering the proposal at 377 Marble Dale, and you can view this on YouTube. Just some updates on the projects, really only one project that has really moved since last month, and that's the modular housing was placed on Maynard and Rogers, and so we're hoping there's no more rock breaking on that property. Another big change for planning and zoning is that meetings are now required to have the boards there live. So we are still requiring masks be worn by people who come to the meeting if they have not been vaccinated. And as always, you can send your comments ahead to Mary Ann McCann at tuckahoe-newyork.com. And we are, we'd like to hear from people if we'd like to continue the meetings as hybrid meetings, where the board can be here and present in person, but we would still have a Zoom connection for those who wanted to listen. The Tuckahoe Challenge Road Race is moving along, we have over 60 people signed up right now, and it has been amazing, our, our local businesses have been amazingly supportive. We have had some businesses we haven't seen in a long time, some new businesses. For the first time that I remember, we have two platinum sponsors, so the Raffiani Family Foundation and our state assembly person, Amy Pollan, so I wanted to really recognize them and thank them, and thank our businesses. All of our sponsors are on our website, the race site, and please patronize them. Our own Tuckahoe resident Barbara Niemanen has designed a very fun logo for our shirt, which we will be premiering this week later, and I wanted to thank her for that, and remind everyone that all volunteers get a free shirt, and if you are signing up for the race, you need to sign up by August 1st to guarantee that you get a shirt. And for any students or anyone who would like to volunteer, please contact me through the village page. For students, volunteers will be able to give you community service hours. And finally, we started our walking group last week for the, anybody who wants to train for the 5K, we're going to meet at the library on Wednesday evenings at 7:00 PM, and we finished a one-mile walk last week, we're going to do two miles this week if the weather permits, I'll be putting updates on my Facebook page, and then we're just going to keep going until we make four miles. So hope to see you there, we'll be leaving at 7:01 PM sharp. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Taylor.
The Eastchester Community Action Partnership. The Books and Beyond Summer Program started on July 6 and will continue for six weeks until August 13. The summer camp has enrolled 17 students. They will receive free lunch donated by our local businesses through the Eastchester-Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce, and the Bronxville Eastchester-Tuckahoe Youth Community Fund, and some Bronxville community members. The camp activities will include sports, which includes the tennis clinic, digital art, music by the Concordia Conservatory, theater, public speaking, and arts and crafts. The Tuckahoe Community Center. The Village of Tuckahoe is honored to host the Weiner Academy for Young Women Summer Camp at the Tuckahoe Community Center. Westchester Jewish Community Services Weiner Academy for Young Women's goal is to inspire and prepare girls, grades four through eight, to reach their full potential through academic support and activities, build character, enhance social development, and promote health and wellness. The Life Screening Program is returning to the community center on August 6 from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Pre-registration is required, and their motto is, you can, you can take control of your health and your life by calling 330-268-8350, and John Galuzzi also has this information at the community center. And then the community center is open for bookings for summer and fall, birthday parties, showers, and other events. Once again, contact John Galuzzi, Recreation Attendant, at 914-231-0229. And for the Tuckahoe Housing Authority, the Tuckahoe Housing Authority's Tennis Association is having their annual Family Day event on August 7, and they are looking forward to coming together for a day of fun, food, and fellowship. And lastly, the mayor had asked the Board of Trustees to attend a minimum of four hours of the New York Conference mayors and municipal officials, and so far, these are, this is the list of the webinars I have attended. New York's Marijuana Legalization, Emerging From Pandemic Restrictions, Planning For Rapidly Changing Future, and Normalizing Racial Equity in Government. And after attending these webinars, I have found it to be tremendously helpful in my role as a trustee, and I look forward to continue to learn and grow from these webinars. Thank you.
Very nice, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Taylor, someone's listening. Trustee Cronin?
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, everybody, I hope you're all well, safe, and healthy. I want to send out a big thank you to the Juneteenth Committee, who, we celebrated our first Juneteenth commemoration, I would say, and it was a smashing success. Especially, we would like to thank all the businesses that donated to this event, which includes Lundt's Deli, San Fratelli's Deli, Salon Delian, Bellagio Pizza.
My mic is not on, sorry, folks. Nutmeg, The Antique and Consignment Shop, Mario's Barber Shop, Tuckahoe Flower Shop, San Pietro Wine and Spirits, The Tap House, and Margaret Mullen. So thank you all to, to all of you who donated and helped make this a smashing success. On Saturday, we had our first Movies in the Park at Main Street, where we screened Disney's Onward. Thank you to John Fix at Cornell's True Value for providing us with popcorn, and John Borducci and Paulina Salmas from Sonus Music for coordinating the sound. Also, I want to take this opportunity to thank the residents who volunteered to make this successful, Donna Blackman, Marveen Downs, Courtney Essanason, thank you, John Gunther for your help. I'd also like to thank the village staff, Joe Marzella from DPW, Sergeant Pinto, and Police Officer Zach Leoni, who without them, we would never have gotten our inflatable screen up, and we are, John Smith also, oh yes, and John Smith, and most especially, Trustee Taylor for his help. Our next movie will be Disney's Pixar, Coco, which is on Friday, the 23rd, at sundown, which is about 8:30. This will be also at Main Street Park. We had originally thought we would do it at Parkway Oval, but we will do this again at Main Street Park, and again, there will be free popcorn and snacks available. TESC, the Environmental Committee, met as usual in June, they want to remind everyone that DPW has started curbside pickup for food scrap recycling. Food scrap pickup is on Tuesdays, and you can leave out the larger of the two compost containers on the curb for pickup. Container kits are still available through DPW for $20. On Saturday, September 25, I will be coordinating something called Tuckahoe Cares Day, and I'm so glad that we have members of the Scouts here, because I am looking at you all. This will be a village-wide trash and litter cleanup day, very similar to the Riverkeeper event that we did in the spring. We've gotten a lot of phone calls and emails regarding some of the litter throughout the village, which has, seems to have gotten worse through the pandemic, and so we will coordinate a village-wide effort to go out into different neighborhoods and areas where there is a lot of litter and clean up. So we are going to be looking for volunteers, there will be a sign up for volunteers, groups, classes, schools, community groups, scouts are all welcomed and encouraged to attend. If anybody's interested in helping to coordinate this, please reach out to me via my village email or social media. So, and as I mentioned in a previous meeting, I'm putting together an oral history project, where we are going to be documenting the stories of our senior citizens, veterans, lifelong residents, and other members of our community. A big thank you to Cynthia Chiarella, Chiarella, who already has volunteered to help coordinate this with me. We will be working with some local young people to document these stories digitally and place them in an online repository. So we plan to start interviews as early as this summer, and if anybody's either interested in working with us, or knows a young person who is interested in digital media, digital storytelling, or history, please have them reach out to us, reach out to me, again, through my village email or social media. And that's it, I hope you all have a wonderful rest of your summer.
Thank you, Trustee Cronin. And my report is short today, I want to first start by thanking the TESC youth, who sent the village this great big thank you card for allowing them to use the community center to have their task program. It's a beautiful card, and it includes a thank you to the entire board, to David Burke, to John Galuzzi, it's beautiful, thank you to the task group. I also want to thank the Juneteenth Committee. I know Trustee Cronin thanked the businesses, but I have to also say thank you to the committee who, on such short notice, put it together. Adrian Michelle, Cassie Savage, Stephanie Palmer, and Trustees Cronin and Taylor put this beautiful commemoration together in a matter of three weeks, and it was a beautiful event, so thank you all. I also want to thank the Concordia Conservatory, who invited us to an in-person opening of their program, their music program, which was really a beautiful program. We listened to some of the music that the children have already started rehearsing, and we are talking about some possible collaborations with the village and the conservatories, so I look forward to talking more with them about that. I want to thank Trustee Cronin for just leading the effort to have Movie Night for everyone at the park, specifically for our youth. There have been a number of people saying, you know, what more can we do for our young people, to keep them engaged, especially throughout the summer, so there are a lot of people thinking about all of the different activities that we could provide for them, so thank you for that effort. And I also want to thank our village administrator, David Burke, he works very diligently to get grants for us. As you know, you know, our budget is, is very lean, and he's always looking for ways to supplement our, our funds, so he worked very hard on getting several CDBG grant applications, so thank you, David. And I also want to bring to your attention that we will have a vaccine clinic at the community center on July 31. We will offer the Pfizer vaccine with the help of the Department of Health, of Health, and it's important to note that the CDC received, released a statement that vaccinated teachers and students would not have to wear masks indoors at school, so you have an opportunity here if you want to be fully vaccinated before getting to school, back to school, your kids 12 and up are able to get the Pfizer vaccine here in Tuckahoe. So that's going to be on July 31, the first dose, and then on August 21, the second one, and it's on a Saturday, trying to make it accessible for people who might work during the week. It will be first come, first served. Deputy Mayor has been so kind to, has to set up a, a sign up, you know, digital sign up, so you can, you'll get it through our website, we'll put it up so that you're aware of it, and you can also look for any one of our, our social media sites and be able to get it there as well. The, the, it'll be walk-in, but we just want to have an idea of how many people are interested so that we can make sure that the Department of Health comes prepared for enough vaccines. It will be walk-in from 9:00 AM to noon on both dates, so that's important to note. And that's it for me. If there is anyone who would like to address the board, this is your second opportunity for anything at all, on or off the agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. 24TA, 29 Silvan, I heard your comment, Trustee Howell, and then I would like to voice my support for maintaining a Zoom, a Zoom meeting as well in the fall. It's great that we can meet in person now, we can take our masks off, more people are vaccinated, fantastic. Not everyone is, so we know that this is still a concern, but I also want to mention that for people who just can't come here, like, I, it's, it's, it's nice that I can work from home now, but as soon as I'm going to go back to the city, may not be able to make it on time for this meeting. We have seniors who may need transportation, or some, some seniors who may not like to drive at night, people with young children, no childcare. And so I'd like us to think a little bit beyond the fact that, you know, we've had to find this way to get together because of, of this virus, but, but at this point, I think this is a question of accessibility and, and making this as inclusive as possible for people who, yeah, might watch on TV, but if they want to say anything, they, they can't do that on the TV, so, so that's why I'd like to voice my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Ed Conway, Winslow. I'd just like to thank the board for scheduling the meeting on the stadium lighting in September, appreciate it very much, and your support. I know it's been a while, but we're looking forward to getting this closed and put to bed, but I'd also like to thank you for scheduling the meeting on the landmark laws too, I think that's very important, and being proactive on the cannabis issue also. So thank you very much, and have a good summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? No, I see someone shaking her head, no. Okay, so I think we, we might have a record, 45 minutes. If there is no other, there are no other comments, we'd just like to wish you a great summer, we'll see you guys in September, have a good night, Tuckahoe.
Good night.
Have a good summer.
Good night. Have a good summer.